County Board of Commissioners's regular meeting, November 16th, 2023. We're going to start with the introduction on the diocese.
Kristi Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Ludo, County Administrator.
Legal counsel.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President, Alicia Reese. All right, I make, uh, no, we start every meeting with prayer and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us in a moment of silence for prayer. Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerall-Dumas?
Yes.
Awesome. I will now open it up for public comments. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay. We have one public comic here, Nick Tobler.
I got some news here that nobody in Cincinnati has ever heard. I was told this by the very indigenous people of this planet, which I didn't even know. Never even knew this. But I want to start out real quick because I don't have a whole lot of time. So the city of this map, I've been talking about this map. They probably sick of me talking about this map.
Hold on, if you want everybody to see, you can stand right there with your map.
Um, I've been talking about this map for over five years now. Come find out, this is what they told me. This map right here, the continent of North, South America, predate Europe, Africa, China, Japan, all of them by millions of years. That's right, by millions of years. And that's very important. You know that what that does to history? That changes history. That tells real truth. And that's why I'm down here, because all that history is connected to Cincinnati. The Masons that's built this incredible city that's right here. And I also find out this pyramid on the back of the dollar bill. Reason why they put it back there. Because this pyramid right here, there's more pyramids in North America. From Canada, all the way down to South America. You could take all the pyramids from Europe, China, Japan, and Africa and put them together. They can't touch the pyramids here in America. Starting with the mild cities coming from the south. That's deep. I got more for you. But I want you to roast on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um. We will open it up for comments and motions. Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you. I've been a little less active in the past week than usual. So I have a shorter report than usual, although I only try to limit it to a few things. So I did go to the state of the schools. Irenetta Wright had an event and it was a, it was a good event. It was, she talked a lot about what the schools are doing to serve the kids, the students in this community. And so I want to congratulate her on that. She did a very nice job of it. He had a nice crowd there to listen to the remarks. And the other thing, I did attend the solid waste, solid waste planning committee, policy committee meeting yesterday. And again, heard about our diversion rate in Hamilton County, which is 55%. We're diverting from the landfill. It's really impressive when you think about that. And we are the highest of all the urban counties in Ohio when it comes to landfill diversion. So as we think about sustainability and going green, the solid waste district is doing their part for sure. And I want to applaud Michelle Balls for her work in helping us achieve that number. And then lastly, we've talked a lot about the veterans situation, the VSC here in Hamilton County. And so while I couldn't be out and about that much, I could make phone calls. And so I followed up on a couple of things that I heard during the public hearing that we had. Relative to some of the concerns of the veterans related to the VSC. I'm only going to focus on two things. When we were in those meetings, we heard a lot about transportation. And about how the VSC had allotted tokens to the veterans to use Sorda. To make their way to doctor's appointments to the VA. And so, but then we also heard from the veterans that it's not enough. And so I reached out to Darryl Haley over at Sorda. And talked to him a little bit about maybe, and I don't know if this is possible, it's just an idea. Maybe dedicating a vehicle. We have this robust fleet by way of Sorda in Hamilton County. We just passed a levy to support getting new vehicles, especially those that are available for those with disabilities. And they're smaller. And so it would make sense if we were to repurpose a vehicle from the Sorda fleet. We could use one of theirs, maybe wrap it and make it available for veterans. So they don't have to be in a queue necessarily, but rather would bump up to the top of the line and have a vehicle that is dedicated only to veterans. Again, it's just an idea. I don't know if it will get legs, but I wanted to share that with the board. And lastly, I talked a bit about, and I think we heard from the board members, about the makeup of the VSC. Because the ORC dictates that there are just five members on that board. And of those five, they are from wars that are the Korean War and the Vietnam War. Wars, important to have them there, important to have that voice there. But we are lacking the voice of the younger generation that has served. And we heard that over and over again, from not only the folks that were testifying, but also from one of the board members. And so I have made a couple of calls to Bill Seitz and to Jessica Miranda at the state level. To see if we can start looking at a change in the ORC. To allow for younger veterans to serve on the VSC. Not to replace the ones that are there, but rather to add to. The complement of veterans that are already serving on the board. I think we heard a lot about the generational disconnect. About the needs of our most recent veterans compared to those that had served a number of years ago. And I think the membership of the board changing, I think would go a long way to trying to address some of those issues. So both of them were intrigued by the idea. They had heard about some of the conversations that we were having. And are happy to take a look at that and see if we can do something collectively. To try to change the ORC to be more responsive to what we heard the other day from our veterans. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Just a few things. I attended the State of the City address. Very interesting, a lot of aggressive goals that the mayor and his council are planning on implementing. Let me just say a little bit, last time I was here, the White House briefing only made one comment about what I went to. There's another one today. But I did want to indicate that the Department of Transportation has allocated $5 billion for Safe Streets. And also, the administration, Biden administration is looking into investing in rural America. Farmers and through the USDA have allocated $5 billion. And the other discussion I thought was interesting is the AI. As we talk about AI and the government is looking at safeguards that we can use. Because we know the AI is here now. And we need to know how to deal with AI as we move forward. I participated in the SWOOP meeting last week, but we had one also this morning. Which is workforce development for Southwest region. This one this morning was their meeting to formally elect all the committee members. And so that happened this morning. Also, I had a very interesting, I think one of my best webinars ever. It was Global Council for Political Renewal. And it deals with ethics of politics. And I'm just going to say a little bit about it. The focus was about politicians being more honest, having integrity. And ethics is paramount for politicians that you have been given trust by your constituents. The panel included political participants from Tanzania, Colombia, UK, Nigeria, South America, Canada, India, Australia, Boston, and many more. So I was really honored to be invited to be on this panel. I did not speak on the panel, but to participate in it. Key points that came out for me was, there's, from everyone internationally, there is a lack of trust in the political system. Everyone said the same thing, which leads to a lack of voting. So we have a few choosing somebody in the board or the council or wherever it may be. Just a few people making important strategic decisions on millions and millions of dollars that have to be decided on. And also the direction that the county or the city may go. We need more people voting, of course. And the one gentleman said, much legislation is lawful, but a lot of it is awful. So what happens is we put in legislation from 1860 and 1920 and we stay with it. For the most part. And we don't try to change it, which is, we talk about the veterans. Something that was put in when that wasn't that long ago, but with the ORC and all of that. The bottom line for me, as a politician. You should be able to say, what are you doing when no one is watching? Am I the same person when I'm here as I am when I'm at home or wherever else I am? What do you see? What do I see when I look in the mirror? Do I see me? Just me? Or do I see my constituents? Because for me, when I look in the mirror, I don't look at me, try to make sure everything is okay. But I remember that I have to remember my constituents. And then, maybe lastly, but I had another webinar right after that this morning. The divert webinar, which responds to domestic violence calls. And we have two young ladies, Bree and Kaylee, that are here. We're going to have an item on number 21 where we're going to hopefully pass to allocate more money for women, helping women. This is a program within Women Helping Women. And I just thought I would give you some statistics. In quarter three, divert responded to 521 runs, July through September. In quarter two, they responded to 561 runs, which is a little less than the last time. There was also an increase in canceled calls and that kind of bothers me. I'm just wondering what happened to those people who, for whatever reason, couldn't stay on the phone, too afraid to, whatever happened. Hopefully, we are able to do some follow-up, or maybe they can do some follow-up and call in. And there were a total of 488 children that were in the homes of the ones that were responded to. For 2022, there were 1,470 runs. And 220, in 2023, there were 1,731 runs. So the runs are increasing. Divert is currently in 29 jurisdictions. And the newest one is starting tomorrow in Deer Park. And let me, I didn't even tell you what divert is. Divert is where you can go out, they have staff to go out and respond when there's a domestic violence incident. And so the board saw fit to continue to funnel money into this program to help more jurisdictions. So as I said, Deer Park is starting on tomorrow. There were 49 calls, out of all the calls that were received this year, 49% calls resulted in warrants. 47% resulted in arrests. 3% resulted in investigations and 7%, there were no charges. And it was interesting when I was sitting in the webinar this morning, they were talking about strangulations are going up as a form of abuse. And the police have found out that strangulations are harder to bring to court and confirm and all that. So they're putting it under felonious assaults, because it's just harder to prove. So we just have to continue to pray for those that are in the middle of this. I have a, I don't know if all the commissioners got it, but I got a complaint from Christopher Benson. I'd like to give it into the clerk's office. As it relates to the animal care center and what he perceives as going on and where we're going to go with the animal care. As you know, I've spoken up quite a bit about animal care and the fact that we know we are overcrowded, very much overcrowded. Some of the animals have been pretty sick. And also there was a no-kill policy put in place when we got a new agency in there. So that contributes to the overcrowding. And I wanted to say lastly about the veterans that came in. We thanked them when they were here. We're continuing to look at that situation as it relates to services. In my opinion, there needs to be a needs assessment done by the Veterans Commission and by the board. Because as we said earlier, we really have no authority over them. We can suggest things that may be helpful, helpful for them, but we can't mandate or have a takeover of that commission. But we can speak out about, about what we think should happen, but cannot mandate anything. So I would recommend as we look at marketing and advertising, because we originally said that they are not reaching the veterans that they need to reach. As they do marketing and advertising, that they include in that a needs assessment to see what the veterans say their needs are. And I think that that will do it for me. I mentioned earlier about item 21. I'm really excited about the fact, I know, I know we all are, that we're going to have some additional funding for the domestic violence services. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to start with the veterans piece. Couple things. Yes, they are a independent commission identified from the Ohio Revised Code. The outcry that came from the news article came from over, came to us and bringing attention that over 40,000 veterans in Hamilton County are not being serviced. And when we received the minutes, at the last minute when all this came about. It was disappointing that it's the first time that we saw reports. I've only been here, I think, three years, but I can tell you, I've never seen the Veteran Services Commission come before us. And I think it was said by Commissioner Dumas, in her time, she had never seen them. Almost safe to say they hadn't been here maybe in a decade or more. And we are in the budget process now. And it was said that each of us, we can't talk to each other, so I don't, I would assume is what Mr. Ludo had indicated. When we got here, we all asked, can we do more for veterans? And I know from my conversation, Mr. Ludo told me, no, you can't because they will not accept the money. They must ask for the money. And at the time, just being new, I accepted that as the answer because I was under the assumption that the veterans, out of respect for those who are running it, was helping veterans. So I said, okay, well, maybe they know best. We now find out that when we get the documents, because I had asked for Mr. Ludo to invite them to come. Because we can't mandate it, but invite them to come. And the first time they said, oh, we can't come because the person that's over it is not available. So I said, well, bring the second person or the third person. But they got to come because the headline, and I can't let that headline live out there. It says $31 million. It's a lot of money. It's supposed to be used for veterans. Was then back into the county's general fund and it was, it stated dates that predated me. And it said that the commissions used it for other projects. Now, it didn't say the Veterans Commission. It said, Hamilton County Commissioners. And there's, I got a problem with that. I got a problem with that. My grandfather would turn over in his grave if he knew that his granddaughter was sitting up here. As president of the Board of County Commission, one, he wouldn't, he would turn over because he wouldn't believe that could happen. But then when you get an opportunity, and he was in the Navy and my other great uncles, they all served, every branch. My sister-in-law, who's alive right now, served in the Air Force. They would not be happy that I would sit here and not try to do something. When 40,000 veterans are in Hamilton County, and when they gave us the paperwork. They're servicing like maybe 400, 500 if we're lucky. Not even 10% of the veterans are being serviced. So passing the buck and saying, well, we're going to talk to this person and talk to that person. Well, they've been doing this for a long time. It's the first time they ever had to come to the Board of County Commission to even face us. We didn't even know what they looked like, nameless and faceless. We had never received any reports. I know in my three years, I never received reports. But all of a sudden, we get minutes and reports from five, six years back. And then when you see the areas that they could be giving money toward and they give zero dollars, glasses, pharmacy, all of those things. And then you see Butler County got vans and they're treating the veterans with first class, taking them to their doctor's appointments. And then we're over here with $300 and $400 in bus passes. I understand that it's not the fault of Sorda. Sorda, yes, they'll be willing to work with us. But if Butler County got a van, you mean to tell me they better than Hamilton County? We can't get a van? I don't, I don't, I don't take that in. Now, the easy thing for me to do is say, well, we don't control them. You know, we'll, we'll go to the meeting like everybody else and listen. And at the end of the day, this budget that's being, going to be passed, that we got to pass, in the budget, it's still got the same amount of money. They ain't asking for the money. And then I asked, well, can we give them more money to the commission? Because if we give them 10% more, then we get to make board appointments. And I'm getting so many people calling me that are veterans that want to serve and get involved. But Mr. Ludo told me, and I want to make sure I'm right, prosecutor, please make sure I'm right, legal counsel. I said, give them 10% more so we can make a board appointment. Because we got to get some new people in there on this board. I was told that we can't give them 10% more. They got to ask for 10% more before, is that, is that correct? Lawyers or somebody?
Commissioner, yeah, I think I actually read the ORC at our last meeting and said that their request had to be 10%.
So it had to be them requesting. I'm just explaining to people that's watching. They got to request it. So then the other thing could be, well, we're going to sit back and we're going to try to talk to them, we're going to try. But what's going to happen to these 42,000 veterans that ain't getting serviced? What's going to happen with this headline that's out there, $31 million? Mr. Ludo, the lady, and then the lady from the veterans, she jumped up, want to ask, where is the money? Can you answer that question? She wanted to know where the money is, the lady that's working at the Veteran Services. Can you answer that question? You answered it before, but we got to answer it again. So people will watch.
The specific question being?
She said, we got 31, they said $31 million and the lady that works there, was her name Pam? She jumped up, said she works there, she wanted to know where the money is. And I think Commissioner Dumas had asked too, but can you just?
Yeah, I think if I remember specifically, she was talking about the money that was, that they did send back, which I want to be again, again, clear. We talked about this at the last meeting, that they request a certain amount. They have not requested 31 million. So the money that they did send back, which I think over the past five years totals about 1.3 million. That would be dollars that goes to our general fund. But to be clear, the 31 million is the, is essentially a cap that they can ask for in a, in a certain, in a certain year. And that 31 million, I think, was a certain number of years that the media added up to say that, you know, according to the ORC, they could have asked for this amount. Fact of the matter is, they didn't ask for that amount. And so the Board of County Commissioners has budgeted the amount that has been asked for and routinely passes a resolution. I'd recommend that the board pass something similar this year. That says, we're approving this amount in the budget. If you need more, Veteran Services Commission, you can come back and request that and we will fund that.
Yeah. And that's not good enough, because we've been doing that. They're not going to ask for it. So the question is, how do we get veterans help? What did they ask for this year in this budget that you're recommending?
In this budget, I'll have to look at what the total amount is. I can find that in just about a minute.
Okay. I'd like to know that. My point to it is, we had all these people in here. They never came to have to talk to us. They finally did come talk to us. And then it'd be, then they put somebody up, it became a dog and pony show. They presented somebody that said, we're going to be, you said the guy that was over, you claim he wasn't available, he wasn't able to serve. And then you bring an interim person in here, he stands there. And then on Monday, you send a thing around and say, no, you, you were just there for show to the commissioners. We just had you up there for the TV cameras and the commissioners. We going back to the guy who said he's not available and now he's going to work from home. But he doesn't know technology, so we, he ain't even got Zoom. So I can't sit here. I might lose. I might not get the votes. But I'm not going to sit here and be on record. I got to be on record that we tried to do something. So I have a motion, and I don't want to play no games with this veteran stuff. I don't play around with this veteran stuff. I'm not okay with, oh, well, that's the commission and we can't do nothing. We can do something. We can do something. I believe we can do something. We might can't rule and tell them what to do, but there's some things that I believe we can do. So I had a motion that I put just to have in, in the record. And I'm going to do a resolution, up or down. I don't mind going down for, for the veterans. If I got to go down, I'm going down with the veterans. But I cannot accept what they did. They came here, they gave a dog and pony show with that one gentleman. Came here on a Thursday and then came in there, the lady that got up, I guess, I don't know who she is. They said Pam, who got up and told everybody, oh, no, you're no longer in charge. We're back to business as usual. And it was never to embarrass anybody. It's about trying to help 42,000 veterans and we're not even helping 10%. So if they've only asked, they haven't asked for 10% more of what they got last year. And they weren't asking for much last year or the year before. How are we going to get additional things? Nothing that anybody said they're going to adhere to. And then they gave, I forgot to get this part out. They gave themselves a 4% raise. Lucky I didn't have my glasses last week. They gave themselves a 4% raise. So they got a raise, but no raise to help the veterans. So I just, I've got a motion, I'm willing to add, or we can add stuff. But we need an ombudsman that's under this board. They could be part-time like we have these other offices. We got a lot of the part-time people. And that person can be the liaison to be at their meetings, at our meetings, keep us abreast of what's going on. That person would get some marketing resources. They're advertising Butler County at Paycor Stadium. The stadium owned by Hamilton County taxpayers. And it's, I'm not mad at Butler. They doing their job. They're advertising. And we right here in our own taxpayer's stadium and we ain't saying nothing to our veterans. So I'm saying having some marketing, that ombudsman would do marketing. That ombudsman would be the person to go back and forth to those meetings. Would also connect people with, if maybe you need to be a veteran, maybe you need to be over here. And then establish an event. I was embarrassed. All these other counties having big events, veterans, they ain't got nothing. And we got the most veterans. So a staff person would also organize on behalf of the county, our own annual day, not on Veterans Day. We not doing it on Veterans Day. Might do it in April, whatever, a Hamilton County Veterans Appreciation and Resource Day at Paycor Stadium. Not during the season and during one of those community days that's in our lease that we're supposed to be getting. And we can have people there. They can sign up for grants and housing and healthcare and disability, food assistance, et cetera. But at least it shows our board, under us, what we can do. This is what we're trying to do, to connect it. Not waiting on, what are they doing over there? They not going to change. They just showed us. They came here, they said a new person was going to be interim. And that was on a Thursday. And on a Monday, they told the guy, thank you for your acting classes. We don't need you anymore. We going back to business as usual. We going to do what we've been doing. We not going to ask for more money. So, Mr. Ludo, did they ask for 10% more in this budget?
So what I have in front of me, Commissioner, is the recommended budget, which is 1.092 million. The projected expenditures for this year are 999,000. So.
Uh, the projected expenditures for this year are nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, so, um, so what I would have to look at is what their actual request was, um, because we'll right-size the request with trend as well. So, but I, I know we looked at this and I don't think they triggered the ten percent when we asked.
Right. They not, and look, we under, they request, their budget's under a million dollars and you got fourteen, forty-two thousand veterans. Three hundred and four hundred dollars for bus passes. Zero dollars for glasses, zero dollars for pharmacy. And these are things I made up, they gave it to me. These are eligible expenditures. Two thousand dollars for utilities. I can't, I think we need to be on record. I know we had a resolution, and if you need more, they not coming for more. Because they don't want us to make no appointments on that board. They not, we done reached out, we done had them come here, we done, we done saw their minutes, we done, they done gave us, this guy's gonna be the new interim. That's gone. I mean, at some point, you know, we gotta stand up and say, this is what we can do and we're on record. Not on, we just gonna talk about, because they not gonna listen. They're not gonna listen. So, um, that's what my concern is with, with that. But I'm very upset as you came here, showed us somebody, and then Monday morning told that somebody, you, you're a nobody, go back to where you were. We going back to business as usual. It's sad. I, I had some hope, but my hope is getting, um, by the actions, I'm not as hopeful. So after Thanksgiving, I'm gonna introduce a resolution, and it could go up or down. But I got to be on record. And I really do think this is the right direction to go. We're not trying to do another Veteran Services Commission, because we're not funding all that. They still fund all that stuff, they still do that. But we need somebody that's the ombudsman to keep their, keep an eye on what's going on, be able to report back to us, and also be able to have some marketing and an event annually that we can bring in lots of veterans to be able to get help. So those are just some things, there may be more things that wanna be added to it, I'm open to it. But I just, I, I think we need to, to make some kind of move. And it needs to move outside of the budget. The budget is a big document, nobody knows what it is, resolution of it, and then included in the budget. But it needs to be, we need to make a, we need to make a real statement that is a resolution of action. That, you know, we supporting our veterans and we not gonna play around. So, um, just wanted to let my colleagues know that we'll be forthcoming. Um, next I wanted to say, I'm very saddened by the closure of Hathaway's Restaurant. Uh, seventy years, I grew up in that restaurant. Uh, my parents, I didn't, I didn't have that after-school daycare, that kinda stuff. I came to the office with my parents that had started their business on thirty-five East Seventh Street. And my parents would say, hey, if you do good and be quiet and don't cause no problems, we'll take you to Hathaway's. And I, oh man, I get so excited. And the waitresses were there so long, they knew me by name, they make the best vanilla malt in town. And they would, oh man, they would make me feel good. They used to have the black leather, padded leather in there. And, uh, I was with them. And then as I got older, uh, come in, I come back from college, they knew me. I come out of college, was that, when I went to one city council, I go in there, they knew me. They were always, they never got older. I kept getting older, but they never got older. And, um, I loved that place. It was just the place to be. And, uh, even when the new ownership came, they had a fire, I remember I had the fire. We came through the fire, was able to rebuild. And, uh, it's just a lot going on with Hathaway's. Now Hathaway's, unfortunately, they were forced to, to move, and then they moved on the outer side, because nothing was going on in Karoo Tower. Um, and I know at the time, we were helping Karoo Tower a lot by, uh, they wasn't paying their gas. I still ain't paid their water bill, still open. But, um, we should, I wish we could have done more to help Hathaway's. Now, one thing they did say that hurt them, uh, because they were already there and, and they allude, you can read it online, I'm not gonna say all of it, but it goes back to say, we can't let people just come in and have a takeover of a monopoly and don't allow individual businesses to thrive. And they felt because they weren't part of the monopoly, they were squeezed. They start putting food trucks all around them and everything and hiding them, and it's online. And it hurt me that they felt that that's the reason they had to go out. They didn't play ball, uh, they wasn't in the mix of the new thing. And it was a monopoly downtown that squeezed them out after being there seventy-plus years. Uh, but, uh, again, I wanna thank everybody that worked at, uh, Hathaway's to help raise me. Um, I'm real particular about, uh, vanilla malts now because of them. And, uh, it's, it's a big loss for us, a big piece of history that we, that we lost. So I wanted to highlight that. Um, lastly, I wanted to say that, uh, the last thing that I wanted to say is that we, um, today, we made history. Um, and if Mr. Bell's outside, he should come in, I wanna acknowledge him as well. But, um, we hosted the Realitist. Uh, we had hosted, uh, Black Business Day, a hundred black businesses came down. And the real, one of, uh, Derek Dansby, president of the Realitist, was there. And he came back and said, hey, we've never been at the, um, we've never been at the, uh, we can take it down, I'm gonna put back. We've never been at the county to ever have a, a day of, these are African-American real estate, uh, executive brokers. They pay taxes, all of that. And they wanted to come here, and so I reached out to Robert Bell, and we hosted the Realitist for the first time in Hamilton County history. And they had a packed house. And they had a number of workshops, I opened it up, talked with them. Uh, then, uh, Robert Bell talked with them. It was the day we were getting ready to vote on the historic, uh, MBE WBE program. And they were here to be a part of that. And this board passed it, they were here, they packed the room, and that was historic. But also, uh, they wanted to have, we had, uh, reached out to Bridget Kelly, our auditor. So the auditor, uh, had a session with them. And we reached out also to Laura Bruner from the Port Authority, they wanted the Port Authority. Talk about the land bank and land. And their issue was, they didn't have inventory, they've done all these workshops, et cetera, but there's no inventory. And it was a, it was a hot meeting in there with, uh, Mr. Bell, myself, the Realitist. They were asking hard questions of the Port Authority. And many people know I've been really pushing for us to open up this process, uh, as it relates to land ownership. Well, today, I want to, um, congratulate, for the first time in Hamilton County history, we have a partnership, you could put it up, and it was announced today at a press conference, we're out of that meeting, the Port Authority, the Realitist, the Port Authority, the Realitist, um, and of course, Hamilton County with our land bank, et cetera. I talked about the meeting was April twelfth. We went from April twelfth to today, where no partnership in the country is like this. The Port Authority, the Realitist, who are African-American Realtors, announced this partnership to sell twenty-five percent of the port and Hamilton County land bank homes. Uh, we are the first in the nation with this type of partnership. This is the type of partnerships I'm talking about, partnering and working together. And so I want to, uh, commend, uh, Mr. Bell and his team to help put this together. I wanna thank my office, uh, Veda Stevens and, uh, Deonte, uh, Morris, uh, we helped put this together, and, uh, Derek Dansby and the Realitist. Uh, so something came out of that meeting, not just talk, this is big, this is huge. And, uh, our board has been, uh, one to put, uh, making sure now the Realitist. Uh, I wanna thank my board for supporting me, having the Realitist on the committee to deal with housing when we were putting the forty-million-dollar fund. Uh, and I'm very happy to have appointed, uh, Derek Dansby, uh, the president, to the Board of Revisions, the first time in history, as well as, uh, recommend Mr. Beard to, uh, our treasurer, uh, to put him on there. And so we have some diversity on the Board of Revisions. But more importantly, this is a big, big deal. And I wanna congratulate Laura Bruner and the Port Authority, Derek Dansby, the president of the Greater Cincinnati Realitist, um, and, uh, everybody involved that made this happen. This is big for Hamilton County, and we are, once again, a leader in this, uh, space. And I hope other partnerships follow. So that's what I had, uh, for my, um, for, um, my announcements where we've been. But I would like to go to the by-leaves, because we have some board appointments that I'd like to bring forward. Uh, we have by leave number one, which is Richard Ernest Junior for the, um, Board of Building Appeals and Stormwater Variants and Appeals Board. We have Christopher Hammett, uh, I hope I said that right. Uh, resolution appointing for the earthworks, Appeal Board. We have by leave three, resolution appointing a member to the Hamilton County Hospital Commission, Dr. Karen Bankston. Uh, we have, uh, by leave four, resolution appointing a member to the Rural Zoning Commission, Mark Schlossman. And then by leave number five, resolution reappointing a member to the River City Facilities Governing Board, Deanna Hoskins. Um, I wanna just, uh, highlight, uh, Karen Bankston, and I'll open it up, uh, to my commissioners, if there's anyone you wanna highlight. Uh, Karen Bankston, um, thank you for signing up and wanting to serve on this hospital commission. Uh, Karen Bankston, uh, has always been in the community, but a lot of people may or may not know. She is one of the first CEOs, African-American female CEOs of a major hospital, not only in, uh, Hamilton County, but in the country, two hospitals, uh, University Hospital and, uh, where I first met her. And I couldn't believe it when I met her, I said, wait a minute, you in charge? She said, yes. And, uh, CEO, and then she went on to Drake Hospital, was the CEO there. Also, a lot of work in leading the nursing program at the University of Cincinnati, uh, coming from humble beginnings as a nurse and working her way out of poverty, uh, to all the way up to the ranks of hospital. She knows every single level of, uh, hospital from, uh, she had to deal with expansions and economic development at the hospital, as well as care, uh, fundraising and those kinda things. So she's a major public health advocate, uh, and so I'm just happy that she is, uh, willing to serve on, on this board. I know she's on a lot of boards and does a lot of consulting around the country. So just wanted to thank her for that. But I will open it up, Vice President Dre House.
Yeah, thank you. I wanna thank all of the members that are willing to step up on these five different boards. Um, Karen, in particular, since you're in attendance, thank you for being here. Um, your reputation precedes you, and we're thrilled that you're willing to serve the county in this way. It's, it's, it's really something, thank you. Um, but, you know, these boards are really important, and it takes a long time to get people in the queue for these appointments. We have tried very hard to diversify the boards and make sure they reflect the population here in Hamilton County. And I think, um, as we go, we're, um, achieving that to a higher and higher degree here in Hamilton County. And I think we should all be proud of that. Um, but some of these boards, as, as you look through them, um, can be controversial, they do a lot of hard work. They represent the county in a number of different ways, but, you know, Stormwater, River City, the Hospital Commission. It's just such a diversity of boards that we're appointing to today. So I wanna thank all five individuals that are willing to step up and serve the county in this way. It can be thankless at times, but it's really important, and we rely on these boards to give us good advice and help us do the work of the county. So again, thanks to Karen in particular, uh, who's in the room, and thanks to the others as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Uh, I'm also very excited about filling, uh, any vacancies, because they are so integral in us doing our work. And, um, Dr. Karen Bankston, were you involved with Best Point at all? That's what I thought, I'd say, I remember you when we went out, when I came out there to speak. But you reached out to me, really, at the beginning, when I first started as commissioner, and I certainly appreciate that. And we're honored to have you as part of the hospital commission. Um, and I was just, wanted to add a, a little edit that we put doctor on there, because she worked hard to get it. So if we can do that, so, um, and it does matter, so. Uh, and then Deanna Hoskins, um, has been working in criminal justice for many, many years. And then she left here and went to DC doing a lot of work, uh, in the administration. And obviously, she's back home, so it's, she's a jewel as it relates to criminal justice. Uh, and everybody, I thank everyone for putting in their application, that's all I have.
Thank you, we do appreciate everyone, because it's hard to fill these boards, and I know everyone's busy. And, um, I know Deanna is a, um, like you said, a, a reappointment, but I, I don't want to. Uh, she is also the one that started our first ever reentry program in Hamilton County. We didn't have a reentry program until she came on board and built it from scratch. So I do wanna acknowledge her and everyone on here, because it takes a lot of specialized, there's some areas that are very specialized, and it's good to know we've got folks that are qualified to do that. With that, I would like to, um, I would like to, uh, uh, make a motion to approve by leave one through five.
Second. Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Ludo, any comments or by-leave?
Uh, Commissioners, no, uh, comments or by-leaves today, other than just to announce that, uh, or to remind that we are, um, now in the midst of the budget process. Um, there, uh, uh, the budget is, is online for public review, uh, for departmental review. Uh, we also, uh, the administration will be developing a reconciliation memo, uh, that will be going to all board offices, just to keep track of the, the various budget items that are out there. And I'll also be working with the chiefs of staff, uh, on the recommended, uh, budget hearing schedule, uh, just to make sure that that fits with the calendars of, uh, each board office, so that we can get those, uh, hearings done, uh, in a way that suits the, uh, the desires of the board. And that would be it today, Commissioner.
All right, we'll go to the calendar and, uh, we do have, um, Madam, let's see, Madam Commissioner, uh, would you like to, do y'all have a problem if we advance the, um, item on, uh, Women Helping Women?
Sure.
Like to advance that item, is, what item is that?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, because we've got two people here, Bree and Kaylee. Um, item number twenty-one, uh, Mr. Ludo, can you tell us what that is?
Certainly, this is a resolution, uh, J. one eighty-three dash two-three, authorizing renewal to the original agreement with Women Helping Women, uh, the Board of County Commissioners, on behalf of the Department of Job and Family Services, uh, for domestic violence services at one point two seven seven million dollars. Uh, this is specifically, uh, to fund, uh, the divert program, the Domestic Violence Emergency Response Team Program that is now, um, uh, put in place throughout the entirety of the county, uh, with that, Commissioners. Uh, we, we also have Michael Patton and Laura Wolf on, uh, Zoom, I believe. Uh, if you would, would want them to say something about the program as well, before turning it back over to yourself?
Yes. Hello, do you have something to add? Are they on there? Okay. If they're not on there, I don't think we have many questions for it, I don't think.
Okay. I, this is Laura Wolf. I can say that we are very proud of this effort in partnership with, with Women Helping Women. And we know it is unique in that it's really a collaboration between the police departments or the policing departments in the different jurisdictions. And now that we're in twenty-eight, that's great. So we're very excited to hear about the statistics and, uh, proud of the work that we're doing together.
Thank you. We've got two people here, Bree and Callie, do you all wanna say something on the program before we vote? Like a duo, Bree and Callie are here. Dynamic duo.
Um, I just wanna say thank you to you all for your support for our program. Um, I'm Callie Welch, I am the Vice President of Intervention Services at the agency, but I also was the former divert director. Um, and with the help of the support from the county, we've been able to expand this and serve survivors and, and communities that may not have known that we have the resource available. So thank you for the support.
So my name's Bree Ledsum, I'm the Development Director at Women Helping Women. And also want to say thank you and reference kind of some of the history, right? The program's inception in twenty eighteen started in just one jurisdiction. And then over time, we are now at those twenty-nine jurisdictions with the goal to be in all forty-nine jurisdictions of Hamilton County by the end of twenty twenty-six. And investments like this are what make that possible, as costs continue to go up, kind of in the day-to-day world, and we continue to see more and more survivors needing our resources. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. I'm opening it up, Vice President Dre.
Thank you both for being here. Um, this doesn't work unless we have Women Helping Women in, in the Hamilton County area. So this is an idea that bubbled up from the Commission on Women and Girls. It was one of the recommendations made a number of years ago. Um, we became aware- We became aware of the program in the city of Cincinnati, where divert goes onsite with first responders. Dual purpose, one is to keep the women and the children safe in that situation, and really, you know, respond to the needs of those individuals in, in a moment of trauma, and also to help the first responders, oftentimes law enforcement, do their jobs when it comes to identifying the perpetrator and taking care of business on that side of it. And so we knew that it was working in the city of Cincinnati. The recommendation was to expand it throughout Hamilton County. We needed to find funding for that, and we turned to the Children's Services Levy to make that happen, because there is such a dramatic impact on children during these events. And we, we did correlate that there are so many children involved when it comes to these calls, that we were able to use that source of funding, and I thought that was a very interesting and creative way to get to a funding question when we wanted, knew we wanted to expand this program. So it was unanimously supported by the Board of County Commissioners, and so here we are with the partnership. The, the other important partners in this are the law enforcement agencies throughout the county. It can be quite complicated when you've got so many law enforcement agencies in all of the jurisdictions throughout Hamilton County, and to get them all on the same page with a program that they were not at all familiar with was not an easy task. And I was at that meeting with Kristin Shrimplin, and the sheriff, and myself, pitching this to the chiefs of police throughout the county, and some of the quizzical looks, and then the light bulb goes off, and they say, oh, wait a minute, this is going to help us do our jobs, and help our employees do their jobs, and keep the women and kids safe in this community. And it is such an important partnership. So again, it doesn't work without Women Helping Women here. Many communities don't have Women Helping Women, and so they don't even have the capacity to think about a program like this. But when you are lucky enough in Hamilton County to have yourselves and the YWCA doing this work, it is easy to think through, oh, wait, we've got some raw opportunity for partnership here to keep women and kids safe in this community. So I can't say thank you enough for all the work that you do, because while we are funding this program, and we are very supportive of this program, it takes the partnership with you to make it happen. So thank you for being here, and delighted to support item number twenty-one.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Wow, I think, yeah, I'll say it all, but I just think of a world without divert. What would it be? It's so needed, and it makes such an impact, and the statistics don't even really say, as I was saying, forty-nine percent of the calls resulted in warrants. So these are not just people that are in a home going through trauma and making up stuff because a police officer would not fill out a warrant. Forty-seven percent were led to arrests. So I can't even fathom what the county would be without divert. So you guys are, and then what was really said that really hit me is that not only did public safety have, you know, maybe they weren't ready for it at the beginning, but what it did when you guys went out is to make them just more sensitive to the whole scenario of what goes down. So we've educated a lot of people, so I thank you all for everything you did, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the expansion. That was one of the things when I first got here, it's like, how can we expand? And that's what we're doing, and I think that's wonderful. With that, I make a motion to approve item twenty-one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you. We've got the engineer.
Good afternoon. Just one item today. Item number one is a resolution transferring fee right of way, parcel six twenty zero two ten zero four two two, which is on Blong Road in Sims Township. This will transfer it from county, Board of County Commissioners' name into the trustee's name. This road is currently a township road, but there is a parcel on it that is still in the name of the Board of County Commissioners. The trustees, Sims Township trustees passed, adopted a resolution at their October meeting in favor of this. This will allow them to have ownership of the property, to clear up some things for, for work that needs to be done on that road.
Thank you. I'll open it up for questions. Vice President Dreehouse.
I have no questions, but I do have one comment.
Yes.
I just want to thank the engineer for your responsiveness. I get a lot of questions about infrastructure and roads in my office. I don't know if that's unique to my office, but I get a lot of them personally, and my staff does too. And I just want to say thank you for being very responsive at all times.
You're welcome.
Because they can be complicated, and people really are concerned about what they're bringing to our attention. So I really, really appreciate the partnership.
Yeah, and the stories that they hear tend to get exaggerated.
Just happened today. So yes, you always say, well, no, that's not quite right. I'm like, all right, tell us what's going on. So really appreciate it.
Thank you, and I'm learning a lot more about roads than I need to.
Oh, you need.
I don't drive on Fields Erdel anymore the same. I'm already looking.
I can always teach you more. I can always teach you more.
Okay, Commissioner Dumas.
I have no comments, so.
Okay, I make a motion to approve item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, Mr. Ludo?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. Megan Guthrie is going to walk us through this. This is the use of One Ohio funds for purchase of wound care kits. Megan, I'll give you a little more background.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So Resolution number two before use today is for the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. This is to purchase and distribute $25,000 worth of Xylazine wound care kits, and this is via our One Ohio local dollars. So with that, I did just want to provide a little bit of brief kind of information on Xylazine and the importance and need of the kits. So Xylazine is a newer drug trend that we are seeing here in Hamilton County. It's primarily used as an animal tranquilizer for veterinary purposes, but has been, become a concerning element being mixed into our drug supply. We're seeing it in fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, crystal meth, so very similar to how fentanyl started, it's being mixed into everything. Right now, Hamilton County does lead the state in Xylazine positivity, and we also are aligning very similarly with the national trend that we see about ninety-nine percent of Xylazine testing positive also has fentanyl in it. So it is a growing concern. One of the reasons that it poses such a significant threat is it does a lot to slow the heart rate, often makes individuals unconscious, putting them in vulnerable positions, and just creates a very much more complex overdose than even more so. One of the other concerning and alarming things about Xylazine is it does not respond to naloxone. However, it is often mixed with an opiate that does respond to naloxone, so we still encourage everyone to use it. However, the primary purpose is with Xylazine, we do see an increase in very painful wounds and skin lesions. And so having that primary care and that risk of infection, we want to make sure that we've got the tools on the street to make sure that Hamilton County residents have wound care kits available to them. So the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board is hoping to be able to use these funds to get these into the hands of Hamilton County residents that need them most, also be able to empower those with information and make sure that they are getting the care that they need if they are suffering for those, from those wounds. So with that, the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition is actually hosting its first Xylazine Roundtable tomorrow afternoon with frontline workers to be able to have conversations about this and arm them with wound care kits to be able to make this possible. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but.
Thank you. I'll open it up, Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you, and thank you, Megan, for being here. This is a very troubling trend when it comes to what we're seeing on the street related to addiction. Fentanyl, as if it weren't bad enough, now is being mixed with Xylazine, and these wounds that people are presenting with at some of the places that respond and provide support for those that are addiction are serious and can be devastating. And so very grateful, as always, for the work that your office is doing, and, you know, trying to keep up with these trends and respond to these trends in a meaningful way is really challenging. And so I think this board, you know, I don't know of any other board that is on the front lines as we are, related to some of these trends and trying to utilize those One Ohio dollars as quickly as we can for what we're seeing at each, each turn, you know, as we go. So thanks, I'm happy to support this and really appreciate the collaboration with the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Megan, for my reference, how many kits are we talking about?
Yeah, roughly about eleven hundred kits to start out. We had originally offered them, we had $50,000 available, and they said, no, let's start with twenty-five, and we'll see how the demand is. And so we're going to look and see where we're at kind of end of year, and see what the response is like tomorrow at our roundtable.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I make a motion to approve item number two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Thank you. And then how quick will they be out? How quick can they, will they have them?
Hopefully by tomorrow.
Oh, great.
Yeah, they, they went ahead and purchased them early and did it at their own expense, hoping that this would come through. So they're, they were at the ready, so hopefully as soon as tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you, because I knew, I know the need is great. Okay, next we're going to MSD, items three through thirteen. Good afternoon.
Lauren DiGoricio with MSD. Have several others with us. As you've noted, we have, excuse me, several items on the agenda, eleven in total, which I will run through and try to summarize briefly, and turn it over for questions. Item three is legislation to authorize construction of MSD's daily road treatment facility modifications and appropriate $672,000. This project will demolish and remove certain storage and treatment components at the facility that are no longer in use, are deteriorating, and causing some operational and maintenance issues. This project is scheduled for 2024 in MSD's 2023 to 2027 CIP. However, MSD recommends advancing the project now a little bit early, given that it's a relatively small project and ready to proceed to construction, as well as to provide a better seasonal window for demolition and final site restoration. The requested amount is approximately $270,000 less than indicated in the approved 2023 to 2027 CIP. Item four is to approve construction of MSD's Central Parkway Sewer Replacement Project and appropriate $744,300. This project will abandon two existing MSD sewers that were installed in the early 1900s and are in poor condition. They'll be replaced with approximately 550 feet of new pipeline and a new alignment, and the requested construction phase funding is $300,300 higher than indicated in the approved 2023 CIP. And this increase is due to updated quantities, unit costs, and schedule associated with reaching 100% design of this project, as well as costs associated with tree removal and a street opening permit. Item five is a resolution setting a time and place for the board to consider a resolution to proceed for MSD's Spring Oak Drive Local Sewer Project. This is the next step in the legislative process for this local sewer assessment project following the public hearing we had earlier this year. If this resolution is adopted, MSD will send out the required legal notices and prepare a resolution to proceed for the board's consideration at that time. Item six is for entry in the Commissioners' Minutes. This is a report of a failed petition for a local sewer assessment project that involves properties on Beach, Muchmore, Elm, Orchard, and Spring Streets in Columbia Township. This sewer would have provided service to fifteen parcels. Only six of the fifteen owners indicated support for the project, or 37.5%. As you know, MSD rules and regulations require over 50% support to constitute a valid petition, so MSD will not be moving forward in accordance with the rule. Item seven is legislation to approve construction of the Clifton Avenue from MLK to Howell Sewer Replacement and appropriate $1,067,200. This is another asset management project, similar to item four, that will address a deteriorated sewer. The project will rehabilitate approximately 3,240 feet of sewer. This project is in the 2023 CIP, and the amount requested is about $650,000 less than Item eight is to approve construction of the CSO 488 Access Lane Project and appropriate $135,000. This project will construct a driveway to facilitate access to CSO 488, which requires frequent preventative maintenance visits to remove debris, and is currently only accessible on foot from a neighboring street. So the new driveway will provide safer vehicular access, as well as an area for trucks and equipment to turn around. Similar to item three, this is another project that is scheduled for 2024 in MSD's 2023 to 2027 CIP, but MSD recommends advancing it at this point, given that it's relatively small and, and ready to proceed now. The amount requested is $67,000 higher than indicated in the CIP due to the increase in the cost of concrete materials and labor. Item nine is legislation to authorize design of the State Road Local Sewer, house numbers 7201 through 7399, and appropriate $618,200. This project was initiated by a petition and would provide sewer service to thirty-one parcels and facilitate the elimination of twenty-nine onsite systems that are currently serving this area. Initial polling results indicated a 66% level of support, so twenty-one out of the thirty-two benefited properties, meeting the majority support requirement under MSD rules and regulations. The requested funding would be used for design services, easement acquisition, and associated permit fees. Item ten is to approve construction of the Wall Terrace Sewer Replacement Project, another asset management project to replace a sewer that is in poor condition. This legislation would appropriate $886,000 in construction phase funding to replace approximately 1,200 feet of sewers. This project is in the 2023 CIP, and the requested amount is approximately $6,000 less than the amount indicated in the approved CIP. The last three items are to approve our 2024 budgets and rates. As you know, these have been presented on and discussed at length in two public hearings at this point, so I will just briefly review these. Item eleven is to approve the 2024 operating budget and appropriate $237,901,570. Item twelve is MSD's 2024 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program. The total amount of the 2024 CIP is $260.3 million, of which $84,201,809 would be appropriated through this legislation for planning, design, and allowances, and will request the balance throughout the year via construction legislation as those projects are ready to proceed to the next phase. And lastly, item thirteen is to approve a 3% increase in MSD's rates, which would be effective starting in 2024. And we can take any questions at this time.
Thank you. I'll open it up. Vice President Dreehouse? Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question related to some of the asset management projects that are in front of us. I remember reading through some of the documentation behind some of the requests, and a couple of them at least talked about pipes that are from the early 1900s that we're fixing right now. I don't know if you know the answer to this, but there is a large team for MSD here today. It's, it's impressive. I don't think we've ever had this many. So maybe somebody knows this, but I, I would like to get a sense of how old the majority of the pipes are that are in the system that supports MSD, supports all the constituents in this community, because when you talk about pipes from the 1900s, it occurs to me that if we've got a lot of that, that it derives the need to continue to do this work and, and the cost to do it. So do you have any sense of, of the many pipes that run underneath our community? How many date back that far? I mean, just a rough guess by way of percentage, perhaps? Oh. Do you have on the microphone? I'm sorry.
Now you're going to hold me to a number, but we can get a breakdown of, you know, by decade when things were installed. The system expanded greatly after the 1940s, like 50s, 60s, 70s, but I would say at least 25% of the system predates 1900, but we'll get back with you on that.
It's really, I mean, it's amazing when you think about it. And should I assume that the vast majority of them then are close to the city center?
Yeah.
And the newer ones are as you move out?
Generally speaking, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Just, just curious, because it, it gets to the budget item. Okay, okay, just, just curious, because it gets to the budget items that we're being asked to approve today. So I appreciate the information related to the operating budget. We've had a public hearing or two related to the operating budget and the capital improvement budget. And while I do not like to increase fees when we don't have to, we are at a moment in time, from my vantage point, where we have to. We started this last year, will continue this year. These are moderate increases to make sure that we've got the ability to continue to do the asset management from a very old system and also respond to the federally unfunded mandate, which is the consent decree. And we have no flexibility, we have to do the work, or we are under penalty, so we must do it. And so it creates a situation where we have to continue to moderately increase the rates so that we can continue to do this work. This board, for a number of years, held the rates flat because we had a significant reserve and we wanted to, you know, go through the reserve, spend those dollars before we went back to ratepayers for an increase. But again, we're at that moment in time where last year and this year, we've had to do a slight increase. So I do appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into these budgets. I know the county staff was also in concert with the city staff to make sure that, you know, all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted, and we heard from the public as well. So I do want to say that I, this has not always been an easy process, it's never an easy process, but I think it has been made a little bit easier this year because of the cooperation between MSD and the county. And so I will be in support of these items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Item six, there was a failed, not you, but while you're up here, if I could just ask a question, it's just hard for me to believe that only 25% were billed in the 1900s that have been, have not.
I'm not going to stand by that number.
Early, it was early 1900s.
Okay, so if we go to 1950, I mean, how, I mean, we, I'm just thinking, for instance, I know Lincoln Heights, their pipes have not been changed, other than if there's overflow or something. So I'm thinking of say from 1950, I mean, what's the, we haven't changed pipes, our whole county is full of old pipes.
So we, when we install pipes, we expect them to last at least 100 years. So that's.
When MSD installs, but not way back there, when they were installed, they're not, they might have thought 100, but now I can say maybe they'll last 100. Do you think in your opinion?
If we install something today, it will last 100 years.
Not you guys, but when they were installed, like in 1950, do you think they thought that they would last for 100 years?
He can't talk to them.
I will say that, a lot of the, I will say, like, a lot of the brick sewers and stone sewers in the 1800s are in really good condition. And then some of the stuff that was installed in the 1940s and 50s and 60s, some of our worst, because they transitioned to clay pipe, which turned out to be not a very good material. It's leaky and subject to breaking, so there is something to what you're saying.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. So item number six, thank you so much. The failed petition, is that the, yeah, is that the one where we asked you guys to go back and see, to go around to the neighborhood and see if we had enough?
Not on this one, I know there's so many, it's hard to keep track. This one is in Columbia Township. This one doesn't have any sort of history, this really is the first time you're seeing it. Somebody made a request for, for a sewer, we evaluated the area, sent them a petition, you know, did sort of a preliminary design and determined who would be benefited, and then we send them the petition to fill out and get the initial polling. This one did not have enough so far.
Okay, you said six said yes, and how many said no?
So I believe there were two no responses on that, so those are counted as no's under the rules and regulations, and then the balance were in opposition.
So what was the number, you gave a number earlier?
So six yes, two non-responses, and I believe the total is 15, so it was 17.
Okay, all right, and just another, so you mentioned about item 13 is resolution fixing the rates, you didn't say what the charge would be, what the rate?
A 3% increase across the board. So there's, it's a schedule of rates, so it's, and it's all set out in the resolution, but it is a 3% increase.
And I knew it was 3% that was recommended, but you didn't say 3. And I think that's the issue we had last time, that wasn't really said.
I apologize if I didn't say it, that was in my notes, I must have skipped over it if I didn't say it.
Because you had, let me see, hold on one second, please. Oh, just a general question. So are these projects, consent decree projects, or some of them are new projects? Are they all part of the consent decree, or what?
I don't believe any of these are identified specifically as WIP projects. That's not to say that asset management projects aren't discussed in the consent decree, but these aren't tied to any specific WIP index, is that correct, Ryan?
So that means they're new? Diana? See you shaking your head.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
It means that they are, I mean, generally, in the capital improvement program, we have asset management projects and what we call WIP, the wet weather projects that are achieving the consent decree objectives. So they, these are asset management projects, they're not new per se, they've been in the CIP for planning, design, and now they're ready to proceed with construction. All right, so.
Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you.
I am going to make a motion to approve the CIP. I am three, and square, and then I'll come back to questions.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Item number 13, that's the 3% increase, and I know we had 3% last time, and it was really tough time, so I am not able to support an increase at this time, the ratepayers are struggling, everything's going bad, so I'll have to not support it, so I'll allow one of you to make the motion to move forward.
Could I just ask a question?
Yes.
As it relates to 13, when was the last time that we had an increase?
So Commissioner, so there was an increase last year, prior to that, we, we went seven years, since 2016, so six, six years or so without an increase prior to that.
That's all I have, thank you.
A big reserve, and for me, it's just a matter of principle right now, I'm not voting for anything to go up, because the people just, I know we say, oh, it's just a dollar, I'm still waiting on somebody to call me, to show me their bill of $1, nobody has done it. So I'm just not ready at this time. Also, one of you want to?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve of item number 13.
Second, Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese? No. And before we move on, Diana, could you get up one more time and remind us about the senior citizen relief program that we have in place for those that need assistance paying their MSD bills?
Certainly, yes, MSD has, we call it the CAP program, Customer Assistance Program, and it is for seniors aged 65, which isn't that senior, 65 and older, who meet eligibility requirements, which is an income-based requirement for low income, and they own their property, they own their home, and then they can apply to us and receive a 25% discount on their sewer bill. We have over 2,000, maybe close to 3,000 now, participants already in the program, and certainly always trying to get that word out and bring more people that are eligible to us to apply.
And how do they contact MSD?
We have a separate CAP number, they can always call 513-352-4900. The CAP program is also featured on the front of our website, and many times, there's lots of different ways to get to it. So our website is MSDGC.org. And again, the CAP program is what you want to go to, so CAP is for Customer Assistance Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas had a question.
Thank you. I remember you put it in the, in their customers' envelope one year, was it last year, or I remember seeing it.
There is still a note about it, I believe, on the water bill, if you receive your bill from Greater Cincinnati Water Works, there's a small logo on bill that has the number to contact, it's both for the SBU program and the CAP program. We do separate, you know, things where we try to promote that further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ludo.
Very briefly, as we move out of the MSD budget cycle and into the all funds budget cycle for the county, I just want to thank Diana and her team over at MSD and at the city, and Holly and Karen and the county team as well. As I think has already been said, I think there was some really good cooperation this year on, on the budget. I know MSD came in at a certain level, our team had recommended some, some reductions in the budget. The MSD team, the county team worked creatively to figure out ways to pull back in some areas in, in ways that have real rate impacts as well. So the, the increase that the board wound up passing was actually less than, than it may have been if, if that work and that cooperation hadn't happened. So just want to thank Diana and her team again, and the county team for everything they did to, to move this forward in a cooperative manner. So thank you.
I would have joined, I have nothing wrong with the process, though I thought it was a great process. I'm just on a philosophical difference, because I know we have some percent, I love my senior citizens, you know how I feel about them, but I'm running into too many families, middle class, middle class getting wiped out because there's nothing, you can't get a break, you either got to be super poor or super rich. The people in the middle, they got to pay everything on time and on the dime, we don't have nothing for them, and they're, they know, they're saying they're struggling. It's not just MSD by itself, it's, everything going up, 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 checks are going down, 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 or either stagnant. So just, you know, you know, oh, it's 3% this year, and 3% next year, and 3% next year, you know, we, you know, people just can't afford it. So I'm going to hold out and see if this economy turns around. Thank you, thank you so much for the process. Mr. Ludo, we got the consent agenda.
I do, yes, thank you, Commissioners, one second, get to it. So the consent agenda items, Commissioners, so item number 14 on your agenda is budget adjustment number 32, this is a $285,500 budget adjustment, $150,000 of this is for the municipal court recovery docket that the board heard a prior staff meeting presentation on. The grant for the 513 relief bus is included here as well, $10,000, and there is a $125,000 adjustment, adjustment for auditor year-end budget revisions. Item number 15 are the bid awards and contracts authorized by the purchasing department for October of 2023 at $420,238. Item number 16 is the award of RFP 067-23, this is for the Department of Environmental Services Solid Waste Management District, this is for waste composition consulting in the amount of $115,635. Item number 17 is a, is a resolution authorizing the approval of healthcare facilities refunding revenue bonds. This is for Christ Hospital, this is for specifically refunding bond issuance for facilities at Auburn Avenue, Harrison Avenue, and Beauchamp Avenue. Then we have several items for Job and Family Services. The first item, item number 18, this is an agreement for $1.05 million with the, with Talbert House, this is for the rental assistance program through the PRC program, which will start seeing an increase in applications now that the ERAP program has closed out. Item number 19 is also an agreement with Talbert House, $4.77 million. This is for services related to the Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program under Job and Family Services. Item number 20 is a resolution authorizing the award of contracts to multiple agencies, I believe 12 different agencies, for prevention services at, again, $2.39 million. And we've done item number 21, so I will skip over that. Item number 22 is a, the report required by the Ohio Revised Code from the County Prosecutor's Office detailing the, the use of appropriations and the expenditure of appropriations for 2023 out of their delinquent tax assessment collection fund. We also have item number 23, which is the reporting of no objection to three liquor permits in Hamilton County. We have the Treasurer's Monthly Investment Report for the month of October, item number 24. And item number 25 is the request of, for authorization to travel at the county's expense, one employee of the Treasurer's Office to Austin, Texas, and four employees of the county engineer to Lebanon, Ohio. That is the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question on item number 15, I think it is.
I'm sorry, was that?
Item number 15, the purchasing, there's an item on here for emergency security guard services for Hillcrest.
Yes.
At $69,728.64. Trying to understand, is Hillcrest still open?
No, Hillcrest is, is not currently open, but that, those are services to secure the property.
Property, properties to secure the property, got it, okay. Okay, that was all that I, that's all I had, just to get clarification on that. Vice President Drehouse?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Item 17, Jeff, I apologize, we didn't talk about this when we met, but can you just in a couple sentences explain to me the refund process for the revenue bonds? How does that work?
Sure, so the, we have the hospital commission and various health institutions are able to utilize the county's tax-exempt status for the issuance of healthcare bonds. So from time to time when that happens, similar to the way we may refinance our debt, a healthcare institution in this case, this is Christ Hospital, would want to come back in and refinance and retire some of their debt, and they do that also through a resolution of the board to refund those refunding bonds.
Okay.
That's essentially what this is.
Thank you, that was for Karen, I want to Karen, and she's on the hospital commission, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
That was good.
Oh, and I, yes, I should, we, I, normally Michael Dean from Dinsmore is always here when these are, but because these are refunding bonds on the consent agenda, he wrote in this morning asking if it was okay to be on Zoom, and because of that, I just didn't see him here. So he is the bond counsel that handles this, it's a shame to have him on the line and not tap into his expertise. So Michael, is there anything that I missed that you would want to chime in on?
Nothing specific, Jake, Jeff, thank you so much. No, thank you Commissioners, you know, and to Commissioner Reese's request from a few months ago, we, we always try to keep these public hearings off the county commissioners' agenda. The hospital commission did hold a public hearing and approved the bond issue on, on Monday this week, and so this meeting, as Jeff explained, is just what we call TFR approval. So the county commissioner is just approving of the issuance of the bonds by the hospital commission. And again, welcome to Karen, I hope to see you at the next meeting, looking forward to it. And thanks to, to everyone here, Jeff, the Commissioners, and Karen, of course, look forward to meeting you as well. Any questions, I'm happy to answer, and, and here for, for anything you need.
Well, thank you for being on the line and everything. Can you repeat this, I might have missed it. On this one, the hospital commission had already voted on this as well?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, good, I want to, because I know last time that was one of my issues. That's great, awesome. Well, Dr. Karen, it's the kind of stuff you'll be voting on. Okay, is, is there anything else? Commissioner Dumas, I don't know what you're talking about over here, I'm trying to stay focused, what is something you have to say?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, everybody good, okay. I make a motion to approve items 14 through 20, and items 22 through 25, except for the record.
Second? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Anything else? All right, if there's nothing further to come before this commission, I move that we adjourn.
Second? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?